So.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the HP ARB and we want to start off the meeting with a salute to the flag. Okay. That's what cold medication will do to you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so the first part of business is to for me to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is consent agenda matters. And for those of you in attendance, those are items on our agenda that are very minor requests, clarifications. So we have some members review it prior to the meeting so that the whole body doesn't have to do it. And in respect for your time.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Christian. Okay. Now we're gonna get to all business. Twelve Green Street. So will the presenters identify themselves? And the application is for a proposed amendment of a previous approval by the HP ARB. Who we have here. You wanna give us a summary of where we are?
Please.
Thank you.
We were some of the late in construction when we started construction and renovation on the project. The intent is to build the same house in terms of elevations. And the size as to what the board previously gave. Here of the PPH in terms of the methodology as to how we got specifically when we saw with building inspector. And maybe we'll take you through what was approved in terms of demolition. He believed there was some more demoed than what was originally approved on the plan. End result, what we're looking for is the same house.
It's that Rolex watch. cuff length. Thank you, Brian.
How set this board to previously approve the renovation condition is the same thing that we've got. The methodology is what kept us back here in terms of what was down and removed from the existing house. So just in brief, and then I'll let Nick get into it. The board had granted the eastern or eastern wing and the western wing of the existing house to be demolished. The middle and the front porch were to be demolished. The remaining volume was lifted and reset on a new foundation. And then the eastern west edition as well as the north edition were going to be rebuilt and reconstructed. What had happened was the eastern edition, the western edition and the porch were demoed. The house was the center volume was moved, a new foundation was poured. The house was placed back on the new floor deck, which was part of the approvals. Part of the roof framing and Nick can get into that. But the more according to Mr. Dowd in terms of some of the framing sheeting were removed and yet expected early for having some notes on there. Yes, reason for that, I have the engineer tonight as well, sheer walls, why it was repotted. The look of the house is to remain the same as this were approved. The windows that this were wanted are still there. They were put in the garage at the request of the movers. They wouldn't crack. Pictures of those, those are being reinstalled for this board's approval. The exterior cladding, the roof cladding are all consistent with what the approval was. So we're here asking this board to approve the methodology. Basically, we added more framing to what was removed in terms of obtaining ultimate goal and end result, which is the house that we have.
Okay.
But I have Nick here explaining specifically what was down, not having the engineer here as well to answer any questions.
I don't see how that really affects our purview. Because if it's gonna be built the same, it's gonna look the same, same materials. What are, what's our part in this? Because it's framed differently?
Not that it's framed differently, but it was removed from what framing and expected to remain. So typically, how this would happen is the center volume, when it's moved and brought back, if we need to build two by six walls versus four by four walls that are there, we're sistering up two by sixes. So in some areas, you move the two by four, the four by four, and it just exists new two by six walls.
Right.
Versus historic.
But the aesthetic of the house is the same. That got approved.
That's right.
So.
Oh, what happened to the cladding? Original, the original cladding of the house, which I believe was supposed to be preserved.
I didn't believe the ceiling shake was supposed to be.
So let me interrupt you. Two questions here that are very appropriate. Zach, why don't you give us some context because this is a historical property?
Right, well, I mean, I'm not remembering the selective demolition. I'm sure this is all documented.
We have the purpose.
Okay, because you know, that's, that's pretty radical intervention in the bill. So, so I would just need to review that. I mean, I believe in representing this accurately. As far as the cladding is concerned. What's proposed? Okay, so what's proposed, the upper, this is upside down for me, so I'm gonna, so the the upper image is what's proposed. That's, that siding is not the same as what's here. I'm not quite sure why. Perhaps there's an explanation for that. I mean, this was so long ago, as you said, a couple of years. So remembering, remembering, you know, switching the window position to the door and now the other way around. Introduce. I remember the big chimney in the back, they had a long discussion about that. That was approved. Putting this sort of, let's see, you're railing on the top of the flat roof over there.
I remember.
I believe.
We didn't like that.
No.
So you didn't like that?
We didn't, but we said it was okay.
Yeah. So there, the two windows on that, that side wing, which didn't exist. There's a lot of making it all symmetrical, which is what I know folks in the design profession sort of go for. And when you're confronted with something that isn't, there's, there's a little bit of a, let's, let's just make the downstairs windows six over sixes also. Okay, I'm just saying, this is a design tendency. So, so what we have at the top is, is a is a re reimagined version of what's actually, what was actually there. So I just, we'd have to walk through everything we approved that you approved. I just I, I don't know.
So let me add, add a comment in response to what occurred so far. There have been other situations where people want to replace their shingles. And there was a defined area that was corroded, deteriorated. And Zach had asked to be there to look at or identify the area that needed to be replaced as opposed to a wholesale change of shingles. Okay. The other thing is that in historic preservation, we try to have, even if it's a subtle distinction between what's original and what's new. So that the bypasser can, if the eye is so trained, make that distinction. So I will tell you I might have been the impetus for this, because when I drove by and saw the wholesale stripping.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna request that.
They almost indiscriminate, you know, and I understand how contractors are. I'm familiar with contractors. And so it was just easier for them to do everything and easier to make things to match. But that's not consistent with the law that rules our oversight.
You don't have to move half the house now. That's the thing. You wouldn't have moved that the house if you're gonna, because they, you guys demolished, you said the front porch and the, what was it?
Front porch, the east wing and the west wing.
Right.
Sure. This is, I think it's useful for me to talk through my understanding of what we've had approval for, just to refresh our memory. And you can lay it out.
This is a copy of the.
So just to remind you, this is the primary two-story store capable volume. This is the original porch, which we had permission to remove. These are the two wings, the left wing and the east wing, which we had permission to remove. Everything co-chained in sort of a dark tone. We had permission to.
So remove, you mean remove and replace?
Remove and replace, yes. And we, remember, we relocated the house, we shifted over, we set it on the foundation. That was the other thing we worked through. Then that really, so what we're talking about really is just the original primary two-story capable volume with respect to, you know, our historic preservation. We had permission to add a two-story north addition, which basically rendered this exterior wall. And then a new chimney, which has to be built to. As Zach referenced, you know, we got very, we expect the historic detailing of that, trying to make it as slender as possible, but still being code conforming. So we also preserved the second floor framing and roof. So that's the gist of what we, you know, what we're talking about in terms of what we had approval for. So we, we're, the spirit, what we're trying to preserve is the original two-story volume. And we removed the windows for the house move because you'll see, I've got photos to show the condition of some of the exterior. It was not a sound structure, as you might imagine, for a six-year-old structure. There's no proper window headers. So when houses moved, the house movers really strongly advised, remove the windows for their own protection. And our intent is to restore them, reinstall them. Those that are not in salvageable condition, we're, we're making custom, we double-hung weight chain windows, matching exactly the Montecristo piles, unequating restoration glass. So there's great pains and effort to make this very much historically authentic in keeping with the original. That was the original kind of design and service. And I've got visuals and these, as much as you've got patience, I'm happy to walk you through this. This is kind of a list of the original primary building sites, which exist.
Can you bring that easel a little closer? Now we're talking. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
And just, you know, talking about two stories. These are, you know, the major building components that might be interested in understanding. This is where they are, what you can do with it. Exterior posts, which this is a timbered frame, it's not like contemporaries moving. This is all post and beam, you know, like a old barn, essentially. So we'll talk about that. First floor joists, which we had been able to remove, which is what we did when we set it on the foundation. Second floor joists, all of those, hundred percent of those have been mid-hand and remade in place. Roof rafters, it removed. We got those, those removed, we're gonna be going back and extra ridgeline.
Try again.
And then exterior sheeting, floorboards and windows. This is a good photo of the existing framing condition, just to explain. So when I talk about timber framing, post and beam, what we're talking about structurally are these exterior vertical posts. They're six by six, in some cases they were four by six. There's the original roof rafters, there's the original second floor joists, and there are some berbers, which we've seen in other floors. But the important thing to notice here is that all this vertical material, all the intermediate material is non-structural. This was essentially furring strips, one bias on the flat. Some of them don't even continue down to the floor, as you can see, you can see this is basically a substrate to nail on the lathe and plaster on the interior. And the new structural drawings, which my colleagues, the engineer can speak to, had to be removed for the installation of sheer wall material, which is basically two by six, I think, not six in the center. Because, you know, as you can see, and you don't necessarily know what you're getting into until you start removing materials. And we want this to be safe for the client when they put in the windows and the reimagining, make sure they have a sound exterior for it to work.
So that structure is two by fours? Was that the depth of the walls?
No, no, they're not two by sixes there. These were six, these corner posts are actually six by six.
Not the corner posts, I'm talking about the framing across the front of one of those rooms. Those look like two by fours.
These here?
Yeah. No, the vertical, the studs.
Those are one by six.
One by what?
One by fours.
One by four. So what you're saying is that the house was framed with one by fours?
Correct.
And that the depth of the actual wall in interior, clavering on the outer shingle, whatever the hell, on the outside. Wood lath and plaster on the inside.
Yes.
That the actual cavity was four inches deep.
Yes, that's right.
So. I think there could have been a moment when when the discovery was made that what this little house of cards is actually all about. I think there was a moment there where this board would have liked to know that.
I, I understand absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not here because it's, the water is wherever the water is.
We acknowledge that.
Yeah.
So let me ask you this, you, you guys, architects, I know that two by fours aren't really two by fours anymore.
Yeah.
So was it one by four, one by four in those days?
Well, it was, but there really wasn't.
What was it? It's like what it?
They're not nominal, those are probably actually.
That's what I mean, actually.
Right.
Sure.
Your cavity's larger rather than small.
Well, actually, four inches, but even that is, that's not normal. A wood-framed house should have a deeper you know, more robust framing than that.
I see, alright.
So, so I think you, you discovered that the house was underframed.
We did, and no doubt the mistake was made when contractor deconstructed the house.
Yes.
That we didn't come to the board and go to the contractor with the plan to then reframe, we break that off the stand, so.
Let me ask you, let me ask a question from one of your previous comments. You talked about the relocation plan that was negotiated with the Harvard Committee. Do you remember whether that was before or after our approval?
It was not. We went to our agreement, we came back here, got the approval of this board or that eight-foot eastern wing.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead. Any questions, Ryan, Brian?
No, I just, we're learning a lot about the house now and it's not normal. I mean, you the board makes approvals on design work, not on structural you know, integrity. But when, but when a situation arises such as this, which really compromises the the building in terms of its long-term, you know, you wonder what was holding it all together. Some of that exterior siding and some of that plaster was probably holding it together and holding it up.
I think that's probably.
So the minute you start to peel those layers of the onion off, you end up finding that there's not a lot holding it up. But this will ultimately affect what the final appearance is going to look like. And that's where you.
So going back to exterior posts, there were ten original exterior posts in the original render.
In the main, middle.
In the main, yes. Taking out, there were three that used to be removed in the condition of the work, as well as the chimney. So there were seven remaining in the original exterior that we needed to maintain as part of the group's plan. So. You have access to this plan.
We have permission.
Yeah, it's, the way it's.
I don't really see why the structural framing of that core building, why any of that gets in the way of what is being newly built and added to it.
This, this was an existing exterior wall.
Okay.
So when we added the new north wing, that's the back, yeah, way on the street side. So when we added the new wing, we needed openings, you know, so you could walk through all those of the new. So there were posts that, until we demolished, we didn't know which was the most current.
Okay, so they're not the former.
No, no, they were not the former, they're sort of mini stand.
I see.
And then there was one at the chimney that I can remember.
Yeah.
Chimney was slightly larger.
Yep.
This is, so my point on the post was that all seven of the original that we could maintain as part of this project were harming. With the exception of some sections, this is illustrated, one of the posts that had some water damage, sort of pick it up against the east kitchen edition wing, the original. There was water infiltration, which we discovered when we removed that wing. So we had to find support. Cut as much as we could, but there was some portion of two of them. I don't get it related to weeds, but. This is the roof framing condition. So these are the original, they were three by four roof rafters. There was no structural ridge beam, so essentially the rafters were leaning up against each other. Not, not, not.
Right.
The structural drawings called for the installation of new ridge beam and as well as new framing to reinforce these, because you can actually see it sagging quite a bit here. So these were removed so that the new structural ridge beam could be installed with the new framing. And then these are going to be re-sistered on to the new roof framing. These are the original roof rafters, which we got in the house.
Right, so they're gonna go back in as.
Decorative.
Are they gonna be covered by drywall or anything like that?
We'd like to expose them, not on the interior.
Just, that's just a lot of work for something that wouldn't be.
I understand.
It's kind of crazy to me, but.
We've done a project for one, they're obsessed with history and original, so which is why it's, it's like us to do this project, because this is our special as well.
That sounds like a good thing.
It's very.
Yeah.
And then for many people, I think it's very little of the word.
And the principal is here tonight for any questions for. Of the.
So I think we're satisfied. I get the sense. Does anyone have any questions or does the engineer want to make any comments? He doesn't have to, okay.
Is this the end of your presentation?
I think we have already got more visuals.
You have all these beautiful pictures.
All right, well, let's, we'll take five more minutes to look at the pictures.
Did you get a stop work order? Is that why you needed to come?
He asked us to stop and come back to the board.
Alright, very good.
This shows the exterior berbers and rentalists. We've only got that, require new structural headers. This example actually never was, this was never, this was the original historic.
Oh, that's the sidewall?
Yes. These are, so then I got two, there's a lot of two interior photos illustrating the interior framing. So these are the original floor joists, the second floor. The spans were quite, you know, wide, I think around three feet, so we had some intermediate framing for deflection, which were the original ridgelines, the exterior, the original posts, which you can see.
Well, that's all new. All that framing is new.
Yes, the framing is here, the dark framing.
Yeah.
You can see that it's covered with. Because the new framing is very much reinforced.
So in this case, the original's gonna disappear.
Yeah, you won't see this.
Building two hours.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be seen either.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't seen on the original.
Exactly, yeah.
Just a few more quick, these are the original, this is the original sheathing. It was in very compromised condition too, something we didn't know, and so we sort of got into it.
So it's sheathed in, in clavering?
These were vertical flush boards, which don't even seem, I mean, sound more than I, but they, they didn't seem to be even in provision of the original vintage of the house, because they seem to be newer built material.
So what was nailed to them? Was it shingles?
Shingles, yes.
Shingles on top of that.
Yeah, they were irregular, some of them were damaged, quite a few of them were damaged. It wasn't a good substrate for the new shingles to go on. It's, they were very rough and some of the door, it was muffling. These are just, these are more for the engineers. Yes. All the windows have been removed and salvaged, these are still on site. So as I mentioned, we're going to reinstall. Yeah, some of them are beyond repair, but we've got a custom window vendor on board, we're already rebuilding shop.
And what constitutes beyond repair?
The frames are completely wrecked, they're not square anymore. They're inoperable, the glazing, buddy glazing is completely wrecked, it's just more efficient to do them new. We've got, we're doing them exactly the way we're doing them.
But now they'll be perfectly square, they won't be sagging nicely the way they were.
Judy likes that.
Well, that's what sag, harbor is the whole town. Everything sags, nothing's plumb, nothing is flat.
Not all of that, the ones that we already installed are perfect, so you have some of that, and the new ones, the profiles, and restoration glass. And then this is. Four words.
So just the stuff on the windows, you're gonna, you're gonna be adding three two over twos, I think.
Yes.
And where, where are you getting them from? Another location in the house or? Those gonna be, those gonna be new?
New, yes. They were, I think they were one over, they were six over one.
There were six over ones. So it's gonna be consistent with this before you close.
This is the old one that we approved.
This is the old one, it was the new one.
This is.
So it's the same plan. So, so you had some six over ones originally.
Right.
And we said six over sixes now across the front?
Well, if I'm remembering, when we looked at this, didn't we realize that those lower single pane sashes had been.
They had been cut out.
And the monks had been removed. Yeah.
And we identified some that were certainly original, the on the rear.
Yeah, and upstairs.
So how many windows have you decided have to be replaced?
I think it's added. At least on this elevator.
Some of the windows were declared unfunctional.
Oh, you mean the addition, I was counting the fenestration.
Yeah.
I don't have that answer. Follow up.
It would be good to know because we're pretty fussed about windows.
Yeah.
A lot of people will tell us that windows are not fixable, and in fact, in most cases, they totally are.
Right.
It's just, you know, where there's a will, there's a way, and you can preserve them. You can, even if you demand that they all be straight and perfect and everything, you can do that. So I would question, I mean, if you just say, okay, there are two windows, we could say, maybe that would be alright. But if you tell me that you're replacing ten windows, I would be upset.
Oh, I'm with you on that. I, we're curious as well, we want to. And this message is defined new, they're wanting to just find restoring, repair. We're really just talking about one step. We're very much compromised for. We're really just talking about one that we're very much compromised for, we're like six over ones, we're not.
Right, right.
There weren't that many, um, that exist still.
And are you installing storm windows?
Um.
Cause there were none on the house, as I recall, or none are represented.
We do interchangeable screen and storms and we, we have, there's a reveal on extra frame where you do that.
So in this case, are they gonna be interior, exterior?
Just on.
Yes.
Cause they're not on the drawing, but they. That's fine.
Any more questions? I'm gonna make a motion if you guys don't mind.
No.
I'm gonna move that the board approves them to continue with the work that they've done due to the exist, pre-exist, the pre-existing conditions that were unknown. And that they should proceed. I would like you to come back when you've done an inventory of your windows. And what they're for further approval as to the window installation, I think that gives you enough long lead time to, to, to proceed without unnecessary delay. Is there any second to that much?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, it's approved except for windows. Okay, next, uh, no? So I can keep the meeting moving?
Sure.
You understand the motion?
E. Yes.
Okay. And they proceed to return a time in the future for the discussion of illustrations and, and windows. Okay, so, uh, next in the batter's box is fifty-five Howard Street, the representatives for Howard.
Anybody here from fifty-five Howard Street?
Okay.
I would table it because they didn't get back to me and they're also in front of ZBI.
Okay, so we'll take a motion to table fifty-five Howard till later in the meeting. All in favor?
All right, do we have a second?
Oh, do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Okay. Next is twenty-five Robeson Boulevard, twenty-nine Robeson Boulevard. Is anyone here to represent Robeson Boulevard?
That was Green Harbor before this?
Excuse me?
That was Green Harbor before.
Green Harbor, isn't that?
Also, you probably.
Green Street?
Green Harbor, Green Street. My, this is out of order.
Oh, you have an old one?
I guess.
Well, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second. I'll second.
For the record, our next meeting is for ten.
Um, you know, um. No, I, I was thinking that.
Oh, there's only one next month.
Um, this committee is gonna discuss. A survey or a, a, a joint discussion between the, the architectural related committees regarding allowing solar panels on the roof. And it might be more, more appropriate for them to delay until there's a recommendation made. And adopted one way or the other by the village, that's what one of the services can talk about tonight.
Okay.
So you might want to tell them that, I carry. Um. So next one, I hope someone's here for one sixty-one Division Street, is anyone here to present, all right? Please identify yourself and tell us what your capacity is in relation is to the project. That'd be, that'd be great, just whoever wants one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, remind us of who we're, who's addressing us?
Okay, we'll pass, we'll pass for Grand Architects.
Thank you.
Just that this project is, is internal changes, however, as a result of internal changes, it will have a window. Uh, and if you look at the pictures, there's just three pictures that presented. The front elevation, the west side. Is completely unchanged. Um, the south side. Always impossible to photograph this house, so I apologize just because it is built so tight to its property lines and with a lot of vegetation. Um, the south side, your second photo. There, there are two changes happening on this elevation. Um, you'll see kind of hidden behind this harbor, which is on the neighbor's property, um, there's a door flanked by two windows. Directly above that is a single window and we're supposed to remove that window over. So the lines of the window below and add a window above the other window. And you'll see that marked on your elevations in red, where we're crossing things.
I'm sorry, just let me ask you how, like, cause I, I don't want to split attention. Thank you, so, so just let me ask you this, you said between those two windows is, is entry door, I see that. And then above that door is a window.
It's a single window.
On the second floor.
I see. So you're gonna put in three windows, two windows, and you're gonna take out the door? Now, we have one window. The door is gonna remain?
The door and those two windows are gonna remain.
Okay.
It's the window on the second floor and it's going to shift over.
Gotcha.
So it's a plug directly above the window. And then they're gonna be adding a window.
Okay.
That's the only change on the south elevation. There are no changes to the east elevation at all.
That's the rear.
That's the rear. And then the north elevation, I apologize because I just can't photograph it. Um, A, I didn't want to go on the neighbor's property, but B, as you can see, there's huge hedge and vegetation that completely masks that side of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And on that elevation, we are, I have to refresh my memory, we're moving a window over. Uh, so that's the north elevation, we are moving the window on the second floor over slightly. It's the position, the, its original position is in red, we're moving slightly to the east. And on the ground floor, we're moving this window slightly to the west. Change, change, I, the, the house currently has one bathroom on the ground floor.
Uh-huh.
So there is, um, anybody that has go downstairs and right? So we're having to add a bathroom, we're looking to add a bathroom on the second floor. And the only place to really put it that makes any sense is between the two rooms that are upstairs. And it falls right where, uh, those windows are to create a wall.
I'm sure that it's a practical matter, moving windows to accommodate rearranging spaces and adding bathrooms is reasonable and logical, et cetera, et cetera. Perfect sense. But I just, I'm just left with a feeling that. Is. Decision of your client to rearrange the spaces inside this whole house. To accommodate his modern living, you know, is necessitating a pretty big intervention on the appearance of this whole house. That's true. So, I mean, that's, that's my observation. So, I'm wondering if more effort should be put into accommodating and preserving what is original. Just a thought, that's what the board is about, you know, in order to preserve. These old houses, you know, this one grew like topsy. That front, that front wall is all wrong anyway.
Yeah, it's all been changed.
Okay, he's, you know, so no one's arguing that this house has never been touched. The door's in the wrong spot, the pair of windows downstairs is all wrong and not only knows what's been happening around us, but.
That's how.
You know, but by rearranging the sashes on the two sides, that's just perpetuating that. History. So I'm not sure where you. Where you. Or quits in the move in the windows.
Well, I'm looking at the.
This is, this is the side.
Yeah, north, north, not the, right, right. The north, you're, you're not even, you're not even gonna see these windows.
Well, that's a function of there being bushes there.
Yeah.
Now bushes are not structural, bushes aren't architectural and bushes are not part of your, so, so the bushes could die. And when the bushes die, you'll. You know, see the windows on that side, walking up the street, the way you can't see them on site either, I mean, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, but vegetation is not a.
No, I, I know what you're saying too, but I'm just.
Permanent feature.
That's correct, but so it also can tend that.
Yeah.
Should be this window over four feet is not significantly altering this elevation.
Fair point, so if, if your proposal was to move one window. Somewhere. Then, which you must, I think you're talking four.
Three windows are moving.
That's on that side.
Yeah, uh, this one actually is being eliminated completely, it was never there, it's not gonna be there. Okay, so it's really moving this window over here.
That's one.
And this window to there.
Okay, that's two.
North elevation.
And then on the other side.
South elevation, moving this window.
Over and putting it over, so I'm up to four, uh, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, 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 so, so, so you're talking about four windows. And what I said was, if you were moving one, I, that would be a modest intervention. But it's four windows, so.
Man, just direct you to the plan.
Yep.
Right now. The house has, the home will get it set up for.
Okay.
Do you want to give us a page number?
You've got, we're not there yet, yes, you're on existence.
You're not.
Okay, gotcha, we need to get to the.
The last set, which you may.
Ah, there you go.
So the existing house has one bedroom here in the front facing the street and one bedroom in the back. One bedroom in the front, one bedroom in the back. The only logical place, and we do not want to touch this back kitchen stair, it's virtual ladder, but it's an important feature of the old house.
Nice, great.
So the only logical place to put the bathroom is in between these two rooms.
And you know what the Brits would do in the nineteenth century, they would install what, no, better. They would, they would install what they call borrowed light and those are interior windows that bring light in from adjoining spaces which have access to natural light. It borrows it, there, there are historical, I'm just, I'm not suggesting you do that or your client would like that, uh, but I'm saying there. There are other ways to. Address the problem, you know, rearranging the interior layout of the house in such a way that it requires rearranging of the windows. Now, ordinarily, if you could do all that and you would need to talk about it, because what's happening inside is not what the board cares. But if it makes the changes to the outside walls, then that's where things get a little more controversial.
The existing bedroom office, is that actually, is there a hallway there or is it come all the way up to the others? There's two rooms come together.
Together.
And you'll see that.
So, so to, to just to. Magnify the point that Zach is making, our responsibility is only on the facade of the house. So the fact that you're doing something inside the house and modifying it is, is, is beyond our scope of consideration. Um. So you're saying that this is the most practical? And, 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 and the, again, the regulations by the Secretary of the Interior don't allow us to consider that. So you put us in a difficult place.
I do too.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a justification, Zach has been very diplomatic, but we don't have a justification for approvals. And, and to the point that he was lobbying for the fact that it's a modest approval, we can probably get away with that. Now, I would like to, unless there are other discussions from the board member, I'd really like to table it, I'd like to come and look at it. And I'd like to ask that you get your neighbor's position, your permission, so the members of this committee and Zach can walk on their property. You're, you're joining neighbors.
The neighbor to the south owns this building.
Okay, so that's, you see?
Oh, good.
And that's the, the one good picture I may be able to get in here. Other side, I, I, we can try to contact these people, but you can see it easily from the street.
Okay.
Yeah, even if you walk on their property, you can't see that side of the.
So, so.
Then why can't you take a picture of it, I, I'm not.
Because of the vegetation. You don't see the building at all, it's completely obscured by.
But we can get in between the vegetation and the house?
The house is only a foot off the property.
All right, well, we'll do the.
Well, maybe we could look at it from the inside just to get a picture, not that we care about the interior.
So I have walked by this house like a million times because it's on my route to and from home, uh, to, and town. And it's so close to the property and there's a driveway right there, um, and. You're, I mean, we're not gonna notice these window changes, we're just not, um, and it's already kind of a strange little house.
Yeah, it is that.
And I can only imagine. The functionality problems of not having a bathroom upstairs. So, and I, I do understand that like bushes die, but.
It can be.
I, I also wouldn't imagine that anyone living in this house so close to their neighbors wouldn't replant a bush.
So, so I, I'm gonna respond to that, if you don't mind, I'm gonna say to you that. I know that you know, you, you three ladies know the village property better than, than you, Christian or I. Um, Christopher I, but that being said, is Christian?
Yes.
Followed right? Yeah, I was confident when I started, I checked my notes, um, so, but the point is here. If we are going to make this sort of a deviation from what we're, from our limitation, we have to have a good, strong reason to do it. Right for precedent, because someone else is gonna come in and say, oh, I don't want the window there because it looks out on my pool and, you know, and all these other things.
Right.
So, so we can't do this in a cavalier attitude, not saying that your observation is cavalier.
I just wanna say something.
No, no, I'm glad, I, I appreciate it. But I'm just saying, for the record, I think this is more an exercise for the record.
Okay, I'm not an architect, and, and nor, nor does this board.
A one, man ever wants to be shared by hoes, okay, which is fine.
But that's a choice, that's, that's a.
It's not a need.
You would have to walk into bedroom one, into bedroom two to get into the bathroom. And if we were to separate it somehow, this room is so small that it would, it would hold a bedroom, so. You know, I know that, I know that it has nothing to do with the interior, but I'm just saying, functionality, that will not satisfy.
And so all upstairs, all the windows that are going to be moved around are being moved around because of the bathroom, correct?
That's the only reason why.
I mean.
But this, this diagram's nice, but we don't have, we don't even have the advantage of, we don't have advantage of, of even dimensions.
Like, I'm, I am, again, I'm not a designer or an architect. But I'm thinking, what would happen, but is there a way, if you leave the windows, the original windows where they are? And maybe, yeah, and small windows.
Well, the problem is that the, the wall, the space that I need for the bathroom, whatever the wall across, it falls right in the existing window. It has to shift.
Some way.
Somewhere, unless I wanna dummy up the inside of the window, so it stays on the outside, but it's completely, you know,
No.
foreign on the inside. And then, but then in the bathroom, it would have no window at all.
How about a skylight?
Oh, no.
Then you're changing the house.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. And no, no, no skylight. But why do you have to move so many windows? Can't, can't just one window help with the bathroom problem?
I can just show you in plan again, this is where the window is right now.
Right.
And that's where the window is right now. And in order to get the dimension that I need for the bathroom, the new wall that's gonna create that bathroom happens to ironically fall right within both of those windows.
And you can't, okay. I'm just wondering if you could do something creative. And again, this is beyond our scope, we're just talking. But maybe you could, at the point of the windows, have the wall jut out and put a sink or tub or whatever you want to do under the window. It doesn't have to be a symmetrical bathroom wall. You, you could, you could take out eighteen inches or whatever for each of the two bedrooms. If you understand what I'm saying.
I, I do understand everything. Trust me, I've looked at this every which way. This is the least destructive solution to the house, and the most functional solution for the continued use of the, of the room.
Okay.
Is this house all original? No. It's not? We're not talking about the window sashes, those have been replaced.
Yeah.
Per the nominations. Has the programming of the exterior been changed since the house was originally built?
Yes.
Quite a bit, right? Only the pair of windows out front.
As far as.
Well, I don't think that whole back.
You've really moved it around, and. No, we're talking about the walls that you're dealing with.
The well sound.
Yeah.
Zach, do you have the nomination form? Do you want to read it?
Sure.
So we all have context.
Yeah, okay. Uh, one sixty-one division, construction date approximately eighteen hundred, eighteen fifty. Okay. Description, two-story, two-bay frame residence with modern, six of the wooden sash windows. Modern shingle wall cladding and a side gable roof, half-house has molded window trim, later repaired windows, and later rear addition, and modern steps. So clearly, from this description, this has been very much updated. But when they refer to the windows, they're talking about the actual sashes, not the fenestration.
Not where they are, not their location.
Yeah, but.
Except for the pair, which they point to out front, which is obviously not.
I see, I mean, I just feel that, because, and I mean, you know, maybe I'm not correct here, but when I look at the front of that house, and I see what they did, I, I honestly do not have a problem with shifting side windows.
Neither do I.
Any other comments?
No, I, I don't, I'm not wildly bothered either.
I, I'm gonna maintain my, my position here, that I, I think that we should just go through the process.
You mean go to see it?
Go to see it. And.
We had tried, Carrie, Carrie's not here right now, but she had tried to set up that with us, I believe it was.
Right.
Yeah, and it didn't happen.
Right.
We never got any more response, we, we had given the date of the eleventh, I think, or something, I, maybe not, but I don't remember now, but we.
Yeah, I was waiting to hear when the visit was gonna be.
We never got, they never got through.
The other thing to be gained from that is that not only the sashes are no longer being replaced, but because the front facade is so strange, this is a reasonably good chance that other window openings themselves have been rearranged. And it would take that, we're disturbing what's left of the old house issue off of the discussion. So if we could, we could, because that would be trim details and other things about those actual openings, forgetting about the sashes, which has never been.
So let's try again.
So that might be helpful.
Just to view it from the exterior.
If, it would be for me, because if we're looking for evidence of the actual window openings having been changed, we might be able to see more of that inside, if that's agreeable to the.
Okay, great.
That just gives us more information.
And, and we're sorry that, uh, we apologize if we didn't have it for this meeting, that we didn't get to see it.
It didn't work out.
But we'll make it happen.
We are volunteers.
When I say you what I thought, and then we already.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, please.
Yes.
Nobody else responded.
So, so I. I'm gonna make a motion that we table this application until the board has a chance to make a site visit or to the house, uh, as expeditiously as possible, to look at the windows, the fenestrations, and the actual condition. All those things. Can I get a second?
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Did you still want the folder, Carrie?
Maybe it's best if you bring them back, why don't you bring them back, yeah?
Bring them back, yeah.
The rear part of the house.
Thank you.
I'd like to see them fix the front. The facade, put it back the way it should be.
Maybe take a look at, at, at modifying this facade to original, if that works with you at all.
The front, the street facade? I don't, I, I certainly would not have a problem with that, it's just a question of my owner.
Okay. I mean, they could relocate the windows, they could move the door, they could make it look more balanced. Theoretically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was division, right?
Yes.
Somewhere along my agenda.
One sixty.
I got it, there's the next one. So we just did one.
Go on with something.
We just did one sixty-one, huh?
This is it, isn't it?
So that's, that's, that's my.
Okay, going to. We're going to twenty-five Henry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is there anybody here to present for twenty-five Henry Street? Going once, twenty-five Henry Street? Going twice? Okay, I move that, that we table this and recall it possibly towards the end of the meeting. Is there any seconds of motion?
Second.
Twenty-five Henry was a, um, offense, it was person committee item.
Oh, was that, let me see, let me see, my notes are twenty-five, I found my old notes, let's see.
It was, um, it was on the consent agenda, but they want to put in a fence, and the fence is made of PVC.
PVC, yeah.
In the, um, historic district, so I thought we needed to discuss that.
I thought that was a good catch, Judith, I saw your note. Okay. So we'll table that until Carrie talks to the applicant, see if they want to modify that.
Is that what you're showing, giving us there? You just gave that to us?
I gave you two oh-six division.
Okay.
I'm need the motion to table.
We did, and it was seconded and passed.
Okay.
Oh, that was asked.
Who seconded the, the?
You did.
You do it so quick.
Know what's happening.
All right, if everybody wants me to slow down, I'll.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Definitely have somewhere to go tonight.
All right. Okay, two oh-six Division Street, who's here to present for two oh-six Division?
So we have the applicant.
On that big screen there?
Hi, good evening to you all, Andrew Kazin, K-A-Z-I-N, I'm an attorney with Bronster, one fifty-six West Fifty-Sixth Street. And Mr. Bronster owns the property and is seeking to put it in a pool, so we are applying for a certificate of appropriateness and a building permit. And as you'll know, on the survey, the pool is delineated, um, fifteen feet from the property line. So we would ask that it be granted, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
We don't have, we have Henry Street.
Oh, that's a problem, you need Division Street.
You guys have? Okay, I didn't see.
Division on the side street.
No, 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 I, nevermind. I had the wrong paper. Okay.
Two houses. On one piece of property. No.
This is the prototype for the accessory buildings.
To combine them?
The, well, I mean, I know one family who had one of the houses. Luca?
Lawson Ritter?
So can I ask, I'm just curious, I'm not, were both of these homes owned by one person on the piece of property?
I don't know the answer to that, I do know that, um, Bronster, Mr. Bronster acquired it through an LLC from Nora.
That's it, Cox.
Connehy, Connehy?
Yes, yes, but their, her main name is Cox.
Okay.
It was legit, they two.
Interesting.
I represented seller in that transaction, the two houses were all along.
It's just, I never, yeah, I walk by it all the time, and I never realized, I thought it was two separate.
Parts, sure.
Oh, so we're getting another pool?
No, no, no. Pool houses.
Right, okay, got it.
Be a big pool.
Olympic.
Yeah, let's take us, just give us a second to look at this, I, I had a chance to look at this this week.
Absolutely, thank you.
As you could see, the pools in the front, but I guess they're putting privates right here. Proposed private. Don't say how high.
Oh, yeah.
Don't you have a four?
Proposed four-foot wire fence. Higher than that. You would think really six-foot hedges there, right?
Well, there's a six-foot wood, sorry, but there's a six-foot wood, wooden fence there, too.
That's to the back of the property.
Yeah.
We're talking about the, we're talking about the space between two existing buildings. The middle of the property.
Gotcha.
Okay, so.
Driveway.
We're, we're, yeah.
Right here.
Between that very interestingly shaped driveway. And, um, and the pool. So, you know, I, I would think that they might want those hedges or the privates to be higher than four, because it's not gonna give them privacy, people standing up at the pool, but that's their decision, it's really, I don't see any reason to not approve the plan.
I guess the wire fence can be four-foot high, but the hedge can.
Grow.
Whatever, hedge is.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, fence has to be a certain height, um, in the front yard, for, for pools, and like, for deer.
Safety for children, safety. Deers can jump over a four-foot fence.
No, the fence is only for children to keep them from drowning in pool accidentally.
Right. Sinking.
Only before beating the front yard in the village of South Harbor.
Right.
Is that, and that's the front yard, you know, so far back.
Front yard here, I mean, it's running from the back corner of the one house into the back section of the other.
It's visible, but it's visible from Division Street.
Right.
So that's a front yard view theoretically.
Have they already, I mean, in the picture, do we, okay, so it'll be a new fence? A new private hedge fence.
Well, it's a one-by-one wire pool fence, so it's gonna disappear into the hedge.
Right.
The idea.
Anybody have any questions or any more discussion? Someone like to give a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve two oh-six Division Street new swimming pool.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Please say aye, okay.
Thank you all for your time, much appreciated, have a good evening.
You're welcome, thank you. And now, we have number three. The Sag Harbor Yacht Club Forty-two Days Street. Who's here to present for that? I think I know, but let's see.
Bunch of people back there.
Yeah, he always done.
Doesn't say what this is for.
They're gonna knock down a building.
Down one of the, um, buildings they came to us in front of for a discussion item.
Yeah. Okay, that's why I remember, all right.
Tenence Downs, thirty-four Bay Street, so I'll be off turning to the applicant. On the public notice, you can just correct it in the future, the applicant is the Maykew of Inc., probably his own love. The, um.
Part of the why is on that, is the property owner here is Deborah M.
Yeah, no, I understand, the owner is.
Right, so it's, it's the owner who's getting permission, not the, the seat?
Not the name.
Okay, thank you. We understand each other.
This is, we were at this site almost a year ago.
Was it?
I was a student with, and two wooden, just wrecked through the whole building, to determine whether or not it was historical. It's on the start list, because it was built in the nineteen thirties.
It's not in the nomination, it is not listed. Unless it's on a different street.
But only the, um, the original sole office, I think, two days. Well, it wasn't sweet, it was, it was, uh.
That's the.
It was Bar Street, it was all Bar Street.
That, was it, was that Miss Rothschild residence?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, well, this is a couple years ago.
Yeah.
Forty-two.
We looked at the gate, I said, I'm gonna, then we want to.
So it was forty-two Burke. Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so, um, and as you stated in your emails to the board, it really has no historical significance, other than the fact that it was built in nineteen thirty, and because it was fifty years old, it qualifies as a private house. The house has been modified multiple times. Fortunately for us, we retained the architect, who not only owned the house at one time, but also designed all the changes that Mrs. Rothschild requested. And Lee Sol would see it, and I talked to him.
And he's willing to see all of his hard work disappear?
Well, he's gonna do the hard work.
There you go.
So, what we're, what we would like to do is demo as much of the building as possible, because the original house was built, um, they, they put a basement under it, and the front is cement block, the rear is all four-by-four railroad ties. And the front is cement block, the rear is all four by four railroad ties. Nothing is even in the house. The floors are not even. Unfortunately, prior owner selected the house to the point where all the floors are. There's nothing, everything into that, in that building needs to be torn out and rebuilt. Lee has designed, made some designs where he's incorporated use of those buildings, of the new, new materials. Modern materials. And, uh, so I'd like.
Just, what do you mean by the use of material, buildings with modern materials?
Well, for example, the, the back half of the original house is all railroad ties. So when you walk into the basement, you look at a pile of sand and you can see all the railroad ties in front of it, holding up what's above it. And of course, what's above it is all sand. So the wall, the floors have buckled from the water damage that's come in. And so several of the beams are actually bent. They're all machine cut beams, there's no, um, no hand you'd beams in this house at all. Because it was open to the parents. And, and Susan would point that out in his manual. So, um, Lee has taken the existing buildings and redesigned a little bit using modern material. Um, and he's come up with a plan. And we filed that with you several weeks ago. So you should have a book that has his drawings in it.
Mm-hmm.
Lee, you wanna take one?
So, so, um, I'll take the privilege of calling you Lee, I'm Steve. Um, this is, um, very voluminous. You've got in excess of thirty-five pages here. So if you, if you, if, well, that would be great. And if you want to refer to a specific thing.
I'm sorry, Lee Spollick.
Where do you want us to begin?
Yeah, and, and would you, do you know the page numbers? Or you want a copy of it? And we can keep up with you.
I've got a copy.
Okay, great. So as you talk, just keep us up to date so we can follow you, okay?
I think, I think this happens, this, so we probably won't.
Go straight to that.
Of this project is that, yes, there was an existing. When I bought the property in the eighties, there was just that little kind of bundle on the front, which was in pretty terrible shape then. Cheap. And when I renovated it, I only did what was absolutely necessary. And then I sold it to Susan Rothberg, you understand? She, uh, had a program that was much greater than what could be accommodated in that little bundle. And so we added a building in the back, which was our painting studio. A building on the side, which was sort of, that's very interesting. And we tried to keep it in the vernacular of a maritime building. So it's built on pilates, literally kind of families are used for the dock. It still does a little rear connecting. So it was kind of a charming play on a waterfront, almost a waterfront industrial building. Over the years, it's done, stated a lot of changes that have been made to it. Mostly for worse than say the original. But they, they really, they did conform to the original idea, the concept for that. And they didn't conform to anything resembling anything that we would want to see in historic history. So now we were charged with maintaining the, the design that was originally there. But upon investigation, we found that a lot of the, the original construction on the pool of this, this area and having to replace, I mean, any codes, particularly energy codes and. So our idea is, let's rebuild the, the original design. But in that, when Dennis said modern chairs, what it really means is, you know, contemporary construction techniques that would be, sort of stand another fifty years at least and be energy conscious and, uh, and conform to all the codes. So we're asking to demolish a portion of it, would be required to achieve that goal. But essentially, you know, kind of like I said with the church, you know, a couple of years ago, we're, we're not looking to change the character of the building, certainly not on the outside. So what we're preserving in a sense is the design that are produced in the nineteen eighties. But in order to, uh, to, um, satisfy the functional program that Maykroth, uh, would like to have, which is a place for their members to sell.
Is there a reason that you don't want to just demolish the whole thing all completely?
Well, what we're asking for is the, uh, the, the sort of, uh, ability to demolish what is necessary in order to build it back properly, which may wind up being the entire structure, but not put a new design on the property to replicate the design that it originally. I mean, this is a very unique situation, obviously. But, you know, we, we like the design, they like the design. But as the architects, I mean, even as the former owner, I can tell you that the, the building is not in the same shape that we used.
Wouldn't it be easier to just demolish everything and start new?
We could. And however, we're not, we're not.
And that may happen, I mean.
Yeah, we're not asking for a design approval. And what we're asking is for the ability to do our due diligence, which may improve our.
So let me ask you this. Um, you, you, if I understood what you've said so far. You said that there was an original building that's in the register. And to that building, there's been additions in the eighties and nineties and, and henceforth. That are probably not in the register.
No.
So, so, so.
Only that original section is.
Right, so, so why don't you define that? What's in the register for us on one of your pages on one of our plans? So we can separate it and then see the differentiation? Or maybe Zach, you can, if you can identify what.
What we have here is page fifteen.
Page fifteen.
Which is the floor plan, the first floor plan. And each of these three sections is labeled as a northeast and south pavilion. And I believe.
This is the original.
You're referring to the north pavilion as the original.
As the original.
Oops.
Sure, no.
Yes.
North pavilion is the original.
And that is the one that's in the worst shape. So it could, it could, it could wind up being that the other two pavilions we can salvage. But we're not gonna know that for sure until we, you know, have a design that is engineered and, and detailed properly. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right. The, the north pavilion is the one that is in, it's just not salvaged.
It's not salvageable at all.
You are thinking that you're gonna knock that one down completely.
Well, I can imagine that it doesn't, doesn't have a real foundation. So the very base, if you look at the building, it's, it's not, it may have been around since the thirties, but it certainly doesn't have tremendous amount of integrity.
Right.
We improved it. But, you know, our goal was to create a serviceable home for the Maykroth Club. Now we want to do that responsibly.
This is, this is the one that's our focus though.
Yes.
Right, so, so you're saying, uh, ignore that and let's.
Well, I mean.
So, so, so let me just, let me just say this to you. We know in historic preservation, there's the Hemsley Hotel. There are other properties in New York City where a facade is maintained. And, 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 yes, I have. And, and there's, there's alternate uses. I'm personally involved in a project like that up in Harlem right now. So, um, this can't become a reception area. This can't become a, something else. I'm not talking, we're not concerned about the program.
So you just brought up a very good point, you know? And I mean, this is.
This is, this is, this is a discussion item.
And, and Zach as well, you know, what is the distinguishing element or factor within that structure that we believe should be preserved?
It, it's in the register.
But.
But I thought Zach wrote in that.
It's listed here in its totality. It's a three bay frame residence with six over one windows, concrete foundation. This, this description may not be accurate. I mean, we have to realize that, that whoever doing this is.
Remote.
That at the street, you know, with binoculars.
Right.
You know, I mean, for the most part. So, so, but I think if we were to sort of parse this a little bit, we might get to the bottom of a, of a way to.
Well, that's what I'm, that's, that's my goal here.
Apparently it says it has asbestos roll shoes or, I mean, do we?
It says it here, asbestos shingle siding.
Yeah, is that, I mean, it may have been there since the thirties, but is that what this group wants to propagate?
It's, it's, that's not, it, it, we're, we're not directed to, to maintain only.
Just a way of saying, like, um, the original nineteen thirties house was a, was a door and two windows. That still exists and we're gonna keep that, look, according to Lee's designs that he's given us. What we want to do is we have to lift that building up and put a proper basement under it so that we can access the buildings through, from the ground floor to avoid, and we're gonna elevate it aside. That would, because we have a, an older population as members. Most of them are well over fifty years old, they all have disabilities. So having reasonable access into the building for a spot on elevator, second floor where the activities would occur. And then the back of the house, the original house in the eighties, I raised the roof and I had created a two-story rear section to the original house. So that's not from the nineteen thirties either, it's all in the front.
So. The Hemsley, the Hemsley was maintaining the facade and doing anything with the interior that they wanted to do. And, and your reference to the roof, they built a thirty-story building above it, right? So, um, let's use that as a, let's use that as our marker. Let's use that as a marker. So you're saying to me, or to the committee, that you want to maintain the front facade of the building? Not look, maintain the actual facade and, and repair it as necessary. And then the rest of the building, you have to raise the building. You mentioned that, you, we've heard testimony today, but people who've raised a much larger square footage than this and relocated it. So that's not invasive in terms of your plans. So, uh, maintain the facade and the historic features. And you can duplicate asbestos shingles with, you know, other shingles that look like that.
Sure.
So to make that consistent and, and, and that gives you much more freedom to do what you want to do in other places.
That's the front elevation.
That's nice, it's simple, right?
Right.
And, and because these things were done, they also, the only thing, the only other question I would have is subordination. Um, but this is existing.
It's exist.
So they're not subordinate now.
And apparently it must have, because all of this that was built later is, is subsequent to nineteen seventy. What are we talking here?
Yeah, it was in the eighties.
Yeah.
So what was the, so what was, when was the survey? Uh, so, but those would not be contributing no matter when the survey was, okay?
But they're existing and they were approved, I mean, they were built. Okay, so we have living testimony. So, so that's all existing and could be left as is. I mean, you know, watch what I'm just saying. So I think, you know, so the focus would be to preserve the feeling and maybe the actual material of that front facade.
Right.
Your analogy.
This is too much, Lee, it wouldn't be necessary to replace that because the, the, um, the framing that was done for the original nineteen thirties houses, two by fours. And the code now requires two by sixes, additional installation. So we would be either adding to those two by fours on the inside or changing them completely. But our goal is to reproduce what the original house was and then at least warrant show that. But using modern technology and modern material.
I don't mean to be insulting to you. I actually empathize with you.
I'm sorry.
I empathize with you. I restored the lobby to a historic theater. And I had to use original materials that were part of Lamb's design in nineteen seventeen. Okay? Cost a lot of money. Took a long time. We're talking about a couple hundred feet here. And you can back it up. It's, it's not, it might be inconvenient, but it's not an expense. So I, I, I'm just saying to you, you've heard us could talk about consistency and precedent and the rules that we're governed by. I think this has been very, um, conciliatory in terms of the conversation. And I don't think we're being.
If we could get permission to bulldoze as much of the buildings as possible, preserving the facade, take the facade off, store it and put it back on two by sixes. That's all. So you'll have the same facade that you had before, only it's gonna be on a two by six with all.
Why don't you just modify it in place or lift it up? I don't understand what the big deal about it is.
Well, we're just requesting it, I mean, it's.
Okay, so, so, uh, uh, okay, so that's, that's my point. You got seventy-five percent of the place you can bulldoze. And, and we're asking you for something that's probably.
We definitely.
Six, what, how big is that little house, the original house? Eight hundred square feet?
No, it's not even that, it's over two meters.
Okay, so what are we talking about?
We, we can.
That's twenty by twenty.
I mean, just to be very specific, we, we can observe in place, decide that even that portion of the foundation and will, we, we've taken eighteen forties townhouses and then finished. Smashed the building, that facade.
Okay.
Why do you want to keep the facade?
It's, it's required.
That's the, that's, that's.
All right.
That's, that's required.
That's actually part of what we're, we're all keeping.
No, no, you said look, he said original, there's a big difference.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
You're not gonna know the difference when we're done.
I just, you don't, you're missing the point. Dennis, look, you have a great history with my community. I have no problems. I have said, I don't know how the other committees, because I've been, I've been hogging the conversation. But I'm just saying to you, I'm trying to be cooperative in understanding. And you're just asking for a little too much. Okay? It's not gonna cost, you guys are gonna put in a couple million dollars into this. If you have to put some two by twos on the back of a two by four, so what? Okay. That's a discussion item. The other committee members might feel different. Any other comments?
I'd be happy if you. I'd be happy if you.